of all our fellow citizens, so help us God. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, in the United States of America, in the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and this is all liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddi.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Willshire.
Here.
Fifteen members present.
Thank you. Also present this evening is Corporation Counselor Steve Bolton. Tonight we have a presentation, an update on the National Performing Arts Center by Tim Cummings and Rich Lannan.
Great, thank you, Madam President. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development and Director of Administrative Services. And if you don't mind, I'll just stand here and give you a quick update. And with me I have Rich Lannan, who is President of Nashua Community Arts, but also Nashua NPAC Corp., the entity building the Nashua Center for the Arts. And so with that being said, in your packet is a communication which this presentation is predicated off of. And what is not in the communication, and the real reason why I'm here is because I want to I want to get your individual solicitation says to the shows you want to see at this brand-new venue. That's the real reason why I'm here, and I'm hoping that all of you will provide me that feedback individually after this evening's meeting, because it's a pretty exciting time for us, and I'm very excited to be here this evening, because it's a long time coming to be able to announce that we have shows scheduled. As you may have seen, we are looking to have April 1st as our first official show, and then there's a few shows that have been scheduled on over the last over the last few months. You can get your tickets by going to Spectacle Live, which is the operator that is executing and carrying out the operations of the Performing Arts Center. And I would be remiss not to point out that these tickets make excellent holiday presents. So with that being said, I'm not going to read the communication that's before you. I'm just going to touch upon some of the highlights. First and foremost, Nashua Community Arts, they've done a yeoman's job in doing the fundraising. They not only met the 1.6 million target that helped get us started, but they far and wide surpassed the 2.5 million original target that was set by the fundraising target by the consultants. And they've continued to do the fundraising. It's been great, and it's because of the hard work of some key individuals here in the city, one of which is Rich Lannan here this evening. The budget, just recently heard that, you know, and the numbers are still coming in, but it looks like we're going to be about 1% or 2% over budget. But that's probably to no surprise with everything that's going on in the world with the pandemic and the global supply chain crisis and inflation and everything that's happening over in the Ukraine. What is, I think, important to illustrate is that we do have the Nashua Community Arts, the nonprofit, acting exactly how they originally set out to do, which is to be the backstop for this project in case we are in this type of position. And they have the funds readily available to take on any of those unforeseen expenses. And that's essentially what happened, is there was two or three items which we're still, you know, as I understand it, still trying to work out. But because it's the first time we've seen construction in the downtown in 100-plus years, there was some unknown, particularly utility-driven expenses that were not planned for originally, and is causing some of that price increase besides escalation and whatnot, as I mentioned, due to the times that we're in. Moving on, there's a grand opening scheduled for April 1st that tickets are available for. I want to encourage everyone to procure tickets, and you can get them on Spectacle Live. I suspect that at that day, there'll be various types of ceremonies and acknowledgements and some of the more traditional pomp and circumstance that you'd expect. One of the bigger stresses of this project, which if anyone has talked to me, they know, that was really going, really causing me a lot of angst, was this idea that we were ordering our seats from Belgium. And I had this worse fear that these seats and chairs were going to get stuck in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean, and we were going to be trying to make a deadline and a schedule that we weren't going to be able to adhere to. I am pleased to say that everything stayed on track, and the chairs arrived on time a few weeks ago, and they are currently being constructed inside the building. Most of the construction that you're going to see moving forward is going to be all internal. I would suggest all the hardcore type of instruction, the major building-type instruction that would be external, has actually come to conclusion, and we're transitioning more into the finishes and adding on to the interior appropriately. So if anyone's wondering why you're not seeing any activity on the exterior, it's because most of it is happening in the interior. We're shooting for substantial completion for mid-February timeframe. That's what I previously presented to the group. We're still staying on track with that, with the idea of doing a soft opening in March timeframe, and then obviously having shows for April and beyond. I'll conclude my comments with just reminding folks that we are transitioning more into the operations of the Performing Arts Center, and so there needs to be a group convened through Ordinance 020-036, as amended, that will actually be the group of people that would oversee the contract with Spectacle Live. And we haven't populated that group yet. That needs to come about. Wasn't something that we were terribly worried about three, four years ago when we were getting this off the ground, but I'm pleased to say we're at a point in time that it's actually something that that we need to kind of think about now as we transition into more of an operational phase. So I'll leave my comments there. I'll hand it over to Rich Lannan for him to say a few words, and thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Rich Lannan. And to kind of piggyback a little bit what Tim had said, you know, I've been involved in all the construction meetings. I was in the building today. If you haven't been on Main Street in the last probably 24 hours, I encourage you to drive down, because you will see the sign is now on the building that says Nashua Center for the Arts. It's not lit up right now, but it tested it. It lights up, and that sign will be lit. Obviously, come at some point that we want to stop paying the electric bill. When I say "we," it'll be Spectacle more than us when it opens. But the Nashua Center for the Arts sign is up. It looks awesome. If you want to take a walk down either from the back of the building by Fortin Gage or down West Pearl Street, you'll see, which is technically still part of Garden Street, but the walkway between Fortin Gage and the center, which we're kind of nicknamed the Theater Walk, even though the legal name is Garden Street, but the Theater Walk, it's been completely redone with concrete walkways on both sides against each building, with bricks down the middle, a couple trees, 202 bricks that people had purchased for $125. And that whole area was done, probably 95% of that cost was done as an in-kind donation from Martin's Landscaping. There'll be lighting that'll be coming up in the spring, you know, the string lights that'll be going between the buildings. That's also by an in-kind donation from Just Light. So we've had, I mean, the bottom line is Nashua Community Arts, you know, it's been a great group. There's nine board members, you know, we meet every month, but there's a fundraising committee, which is a lot of the members are part of Nashua Community Arts. We also have some outside members, and we're meeting a couple times a month. The fundraising hasn't stopped. Again, like Tim said, we raised a $2.5 million two years ago, probably from like tomorrow or something. I don't know. I think we closed the middle of December in 2020. We did our job then. However, the job never stopped, and it's not stopping anytime soon. We're in negotiations with a potential theater donor. We obviously had the anonymous donor that everybody knows about for the naming rights of the Nashua Center for the Arts. We have over 400 donors that have donated, and a lot of them, you know, is substantial money, but a lot of them, we've got a couple hundred people that bought $125 brick, which is just fine. But again, there's well over 400 donors. We have a donor software through a donor software package that we keep track, and we don't forget any one of the donors, and we'll probably, we will have donor events, obviously, when it opens. And like Tim said, there's been a lot of questions, even from some of the people in this room, about what is going on April 1st. And that's a little bit TBD at this point. We just want to make sure that before the spectacle confirms anything, there will be certain things that'll go on that day. We're not sure if it'll be a ribbon-cutting. We're not sure exactly what it'll be. There is a show that evening that is a purchase show. I mean, like, it won't be Bruce Springsteen or Taylor Swift, but it's going to be somebody. Oh, yeah, we keep on, we're asked the craziest names. I really think they're going to come to a 750-seat theater. But, I mean, we'll try, I guess, who knows? But that is a ticketed event. But again, that evening is going to be, and people say, "Well, I'm buying a ticket for $18. I have no idea who it's going to be." Well, first of all, it's $18. It's going to be local, probably local performance. This is not like the big show again. We're not getting some big, huge act, but it's going to be something to really set things off. And if we do get a seal as, like Tim was saying, a substantial completion, probably a lot of part of February, we're hoping to do some open houses, you know, a donor event, hoping some public open houses is the goal. Spectacle operates Laconia. They opened Laconia last year, and that's exactly what they did. They probably did eight to 10 open houses, both with private donor open houses as well as just public open houses. Let the public come in and just have at it. Walk around, check it out. And that's what our goal is, as long as the things that still have those six, eight, or 10-week timeframes come in as they're supposed to, we're pretty optimistic. So our goal would be to be able to do those kind of things in that mid to late March before the April 1st. But I talked to Pete Lally, the president of Spectacle, today, and, you know, he wouldn't blow smoke up my fanny, and I'm not going to do it to you. He is thrilled with the ticket sales so far for an event that, for, I'm sorry, for the center that's really, it's out there, but it's out there locally. It's really not out there like in the general marketplace. And it's about 10 shows that are out there, and these are shows that he's put up money. I mean, tens of thousands of dollars, probably more than tens of thousands when you count all 10 shows. I think Seventh and Eighth is like Winnie the Pooh musicals, and then we've got, you know, all kinds of groups that are, you know, that are planned through June. He's got more coming up next week, two to four more that he's going to announce. So they're making a huge commitment with the hopes and fingers and toes crossed that everything gets wrapped up on schedule as we hope it to be. But I think, you know, I know I've circulated some emails. I mean, the press that have talked about what that theater in Laconia has done for that downtown, but for Laconia, for that economy, is phenomenal. It's just completely revitalized the downtown and that entire area of Laconia. And, I mean, Peter's told me that they're not just getting people that are, you know, in Laconia, because obviously people say, "Well, Laconia is kind of a more of a trio. It's a vacation place." They're selling out every show, just about, in Laconia, and they're bringing people in from a pretty good distance. Their 750 seats, just like us. They might have the same shows. They may be in Laconia and come to us or vice versa, because we're far enough apart. But they're thrilled with what's going on in Laconia. Their open houses was a huge hit before they opened, and they still were like, their contractors, and they're still working when they're open houses. Hoping we don't have to have that? I mean, I was in there today. There must have been 50, 60 people in that place. I mean, I get out of this wires, you know, bouncing off my head and stuff. It was, the amount of people in there trying to get this done on schedule is pretty amazing. But I get Spectacle is thrilled with what they have sold so far to date in the 10 shows they've announced that quickly. So, and we're excited. I took some pictures today of inside, you know, that whole orchestra level, the seating platform, the physical seats aren't there, but that whole orchestra level is, the platforms are in. It's an amazing picture. And again, seeing the name of the building is pretty exciting, too. So, you know, so he did all the sales, which is, I was surprised. So great, listened to everything he said about going online and buying tickets. But again, we're, you know, we'll keep you up to date, and we're going to, you know, everybody will know as we get closer of what the schedule is going to be, and hopefully we'll see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited for this Performing Arts Center. Thank you. Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of September 27th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022. The accepted placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding status update on Nashua Center for Arts Project, December 2022.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Matt Sullivan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director. I'm here this evening to speak very briefly relative to the communication requiring final approval by the Board this evening, and that is the proposed amendment to the Essex Power Services contract extension. This contract was discussed with the Finance Committee just last week and received support from that committee. However, in the period of time since the committee reviewed the contract extension, we had further conversations with the contractor being Essex Hydro, and they requested three additional modifications, both minor and somewhat minor, as I would characterize it, to the contract as it was presented to the Finance Committee. And before I get into what those three changes are, I would just add that we are supportive of the changes. We feel them to be non-substantive and would request approval of the communication this evening, notwithstanding these three changes. However, to quickly overview what those are, as part of our conversation with the Finance Committee, we indicated there would be some fluctuation within the labor rates presented in the contract. To indicate what that fluctuation might look like, we were actually able to finalize the proposed rates for the upcoming contract year. And as a result, we have received revised financials, and I actually passed those out right before the meeting, indicated the new operator, supervisor, manager, president, and other hourly rates that will be charged under the proposed contract. I will note for the record that despite what we're hearing about the labor market right now, not all of those rates on the hourly basis actually went up. Some actually dropped. And so the overall net value of the contract is not being modified despite these modifications to the hourly rates that are actually included within the contract itself. So modifications to the hourly rates are item number one and solidifying those. Item number two is just simply updating the contact information that was actually included within the contract. We realized just last minute that some of the email addresses and otherwise primary contact information needed to be addressed, and this had slipped under our noses of review, and so we proposed to make those changes as well. And then the third item is something that we had contemplated but not necessarily reviewed clearly within the contract, and that is that there had initially been discussion of a proration of the Jackson Falls turbine revenue when the Jackson Falls turbine is under replacement. However, there had been principal negotiation and also agreement that that proration would actually be removed from the contract. And on the Appendix B sheet that I passed out to you this evening, you'll see in blue text in the second paragraph that that proration for Jackson Falls revenue, that clause has been removed. Therefore, the minimum payment that will be made to Essex for the administrative fee, which is the revenue-based fee, will remain a minimum of $130,000. It will not be modified by a proration to the revenue that we expect during the Jackson Falls turbine work. And again, I just want to reiterate, that's consistent with the message that we portrayed at the Finance Committee meeting, and that is that the minimum administrative charge will be $130,000. Notwithstanding those changes, I just want to speak briefly in favor. We've had a wonderful relationship with Essex Hydro in the past. They've been our contractor for a long period of time. They've played an integral role, not only in some of the ongoing improvements and maintenance we've needed to do, but also will play a critical role in the upgrade moving forward. So I'd ask for your approval of this communication this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Communications, oh, sorry, wrong page. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding multi-year contract award Essex Power Services.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion to approve and extend the contract with Essex Power Services Incorporated to provide operation and maintenance services for the Jackson Mills and Mine Falls hydroelectric facilities in the amount of approximately $476,000, and amend the contract extension to: One, update the rates included within the agreement to reflect the 2022 labor rates. This does not modify the proposed contract amount. Two, remove the language that prorates the minimum administrative fee for the Jackson Falls improvements. And three, update contact information to include current city and Essex staff. Funding will be through Department 170 Hydroelectric Fund 54290, Hydroelectric General Fund. And if I may, just a quick comment.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you. You received the Appendix B from Director Sullivan. And if you'll note, in the hourly rates, they actually all went down with the exception, although it shows that it looks like that one went up. But from the actual contract that we had, we had the $125, I believe, per hour. But each one of them has actually gone down. And the reason for this was, if you looked at the original contract, it did say estimate, and they estimated based on an inflationary rate. And as it turns out, they didn't get quite as much as we were expecting. So, but as Director Cummings mentioned, this is not going to change the contract as the contract is for the $130,000 administrative fee, and so that remains that way. And the changes were actually, if I believe from what Director Sullivan told me, it was basically email addresses were incorrect, and so we kind of got all that. But other than that, the contract is, and there was, this went through, I believe, with 100% approval from the Finance Committee. It comes here because it is a multi-year contract, so thank you.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding the purchase of two Fire Department F-150 pickup trucks.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and pay the increased prices for the F-150 pickup trucks for the fire department in the amount not to exceed $126,175. Funds are available on the survey call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding the purchase of citywide communications vehicle.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I will move to approve the request to keep the 2014 Ford Explorer and to approve the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe using approved FY 2023 SURF funds, subject to the Finance Committee approval.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding 2023 Board of Alderman calendar of committee dates for approval.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the 2023 Board of Alderman calendar.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. By approving this, though, we still have the ability, or, Madam President, you still have the ability to move dates if necessary. Is that correct?
It is. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
Petition for street discontinuance Dozer Road A-712. Petition for a street discontinuance Dozer Roads lots A-990, 132-85, A-994, A-768, A-68, 132-1, A-67, and A-58.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petitions for street discontinuance. Refer them to the Committee on Infrastructure, the Nashua City Planning Board, and schedule a special Board of Alderman meeting, public hearing for Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Housing Trust Fund Committee, William Dolan, term to expire January 1st, 2026, 71 Spitbrook Road, Unit 109, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer it to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 19th, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the November 21st, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the October 12th Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of Oscar Velasquez, 76 Bovewab Nashua, and Jason Tollersky of 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants, with terms to expire December 1st, 2025. Would Mr. Velasquez and Mr. Tollersky please come forward and take the oath of office?
Right here. Where would you reach? Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Citizens Advisory Commission on Community Grants according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-22-072 relative to the acceptance of $58,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity 2023 Violence Against Women Grant Program into authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move for final passage of R-22072.
Motion is for final passage. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2272 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-073 relative to the acceptance of $330,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity Fiscal Year 2023 Opiate Abuse Reduction Initiative OARI Grant.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to, oh, sorry, lost my note here. I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R-22073.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R-22-074 authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,500,000 for turbine work and various repairs and improvements to the Jackson Mills in Mine Falls hydroelectric facilities.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-074 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yea.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yea.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2274 is duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-075 relative to the adoption of the Nashua Community Power Electric Aggregation Electric Aggregation Board.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-22-075. And may I make just a quick comment? And I promise to be quick. I truly want to thank.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you. I truly want to thank the Aggregation Committee for what they did. I know a lot of hard work went in this, and nothing is ever perfect, but just a reminder that this is the first step. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure that I understand that we're voting on this. And I spoke with Ms. Brown in the intermission, but I just wanted, I wanted it to be on the record, that by saying yes to this, we are simply allowing the committee and members of that committee to move forward to next steps. Because I think that there are a lot of questions in this. But by voting yes, it allows those questions to be answered. And at some point, it will then come back to the board for us to say yea or nay to. And I just want to, I just would like clarification on that before we cast a vote, please.
That's correct. What you said is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further, you're welcome. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None? Motion carries, and Resolution 2275 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-22-027, updating the ordinances regarding taxicab licensing.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-22-027.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Clerk Healy for coming forward and finding a solution here that's going to save the city time and money. And I think this is a great piece that we spoke at our committee, and hope that you'll support it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 22-27 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-22-032, authorizing stop signs on Douglas Street at its intersection with Dinsmore Street.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-22032. Like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This is an intersection near the school on Manchester Street. And it's, it's to better control traffic, and it's a full approval of the traffic manager, the mayor, and the chief engineer of the city.
Further discussion? Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to add to what Alderman Dowd has already said. This is important. It's kind of between our two wards, so, which seems to happen too often. But those in my ward have been very affected by this as well. And the traffic on Manchester Street and going through these stop signs and so on was making it very dangerous. I think this is a worthwhile yea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2232 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-22-0033, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 12, 2022 through December 31, 2022.
Alderman Jettie.
So, I move to amend O-22033 by replacing it with Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made by the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So, during the joint committee meeting, it was noted that originally, the ordinance started on December 12. And tonight being December 13, we realized we were a little ahead of the game. So, we voted to amend, to change it to starting tomorrow, December 14. And that's what the amendment is.
Okay, you've all heard the amendment. Is there discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries. Alderman Jettie.
So, I now move for final passage of O-22-033 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a quick question. Maybe Director Cummings threw you to Director Cummings. Is the app going to still allow to accept payments? Or is there a way that we can not just, like, do not pay, please have free parking? Is there anything like that that's happening, or could someone pay by accident? If I may, Madam President.
Director Cummings.
We worked it out, so we'll be able to handle it through our electronic payment plans. But there will be signage put out. Particularly this year, you're going to see the pay stations wrapped. And then there'll be individual meter bags as well. That basically recognizes the holiday season. Thank you.
You bet. Alderman Lopez.
For Director Cummings before he leaves, when you say wrapped, do you mean, like, literally wrapped? That would be a fantastic holiday statement. So, it's, for lack of a better description, a very decorative trash bag? Well, thank you for not going with the traditional. With some sort of positive messaging. I think it says "Seasons Greetings" or something to that effect. So, it will be gift wrapped?
It will be gift wrapped.
Gift bagged.
You all said Alderman Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Before you step, I actually have a little bit, just a small question. Sorry. Since you brought it up. So, you said you're going to be able to take care of it electronically. If I go to pay for my app, which is the way I do it, will it tell me that it's free? Or will I be able to pay, and then I'll be like, oh, man, I wish I had to pay?
So, subject to me confirming this, my understanding is that quote-unquote "Zone 3" would be turned off on the app.
Awesome. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance, that motion carries, and Ordinance 2233 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O-22-034, prohibiting parking on a portion of the north side of Amherst Street.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-22034. I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, this is an area where there's a drive-through pickup restaurant, without naming it. And we've had cars packed up on Amherst Street and trailer trucks that park there, so they go walk in to get a cup of coffee. It causes issues with people riding bicycles or walking, and also with traffic. So, this, again, has been cleared by the traffic consultant and the city engineer, so, and the mayor.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. Please ask the board to approve this. Being the other half of Amherst Street, I hear just as much about it as Alderman Dowd does. So, this will hopefully help, or hopefully be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Alderman Klee.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize because I looked away for a second. So, I want to make sure that I am speaking to the right one. This is the Amherst Street at the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes.
And it was one of my constituents who rides her bike to the college where she works. And oftentimes that, and she brought us pictures and so on. And oftentimes, she'd have to go into traffic in order to get around these parked tractor-trailers or the queue line from Dunkin' Donuts. And just to clarify, it did get brought up, but I want to reiterate, at the time that Dunkin' Donuts was granted their permission to build by the planning department, it was discussed about the queue line and asked them if they wanted to come in from a different way. At that time, the land on the other side, I believe, was not occupied. And they said, nope, they wanted to do this. Part of the reason why this has become so bad is since COVID, they closed the inside of the store, so it was kind of a drive-through only. And it's going to probably take some time, but I think this is the first step. And it gives the police the teeth to be able to tick it. Even though it makes sense, don't park on a state highway like this, they were still doing it. And so, the police spoke to Ms. Gamret and said there was very little they could do. This gives them the teeth to tick it and so on. So, I appreciate Alderman Dowd and so on putting this through. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2234 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-22-035, authorizing a stop sign on Conant Road at its intersection with Cyril's Road.
Alderman Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion for final passage of O-22035, and would like to speak to it briefly, please.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This came as a recommendation from Nashua DPW. This is not Ward 9, it's Ward 5, but it sits right on the border of it. Currently, this intersection is a three-way intersection with two stop signs. This adds a third stop sign to it. Long-term, it will add traffic calming measures once the new middle school comes in and that area starts to fill up with traffic. So, I would ask the board to please pass this tonight. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Discussion. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, when we had this in committee, I voted against it. And I got people saying, why did you vote against that? And I had people reach out to me, which I thought was weird because it was just a stop sign. I voted on other sides of bigger issues in the past. But the reason why I did is because Alderman Jettie, who's ward it is, had mentioned something about safety, people coming around that corner and not realizing now there's a stop sign. And there was some, you know, talk about they're going to put another sign there that says, "Stop coming up ahead." But he seemed to say that there was dangerous. So, I just wanted to make sure before I vote yes on it tonight, that Alderman Jettie can confirm that this is a good thing for that area, and it will help the safety, and it won't be, shouldn't be, an issue. And I'll vote for it if he tells me that that's, that's good. Yeah, through you, Alderman Jettie.
Did you want to weigh in, Alderman Jettie?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and during the committee meeting, I voted in favor of it. I just, what Alderman Tebow is referring to is I had a constituent who pointed out that it was on a curve, and that the new stop sign would come up unexpectedly. But the Department of Public Works, you know, has already assumed, right now, the signs are there, but they're bagged. Not a gift bag like Alderman, Director Cummings provided, but they're bagged. And tomorrow, I assume they'll be unveiled. And so, there's a sign that's, I can't remember how far, but somewhere at the beginning of the curb, it says, "Stop ahead," to warn people that the stop sign is coming. And then when, whether, when the weather permits, there'll be a white line painted to further indicate that there should be a stop there. So, hopefully, that'll avoid any problems. So, I did vote for it, and I ask you to vote for it as well tonight.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Ordinance 2235 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-22-036, increasing the disabled tax exemption.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend O-22-036 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made by the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee. I can speak briefly to my motion.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. When I originally reached out to legal to write this, update this ordinance, it was to mimic what my colleagues from Ward 9, 1, and 4 have done for the elderly exemption. But thankfully, I also had a conversation with my colleague from Ward 3, who was proposing legislation later on that we'll see regarding how much folks can have in assets. And we were able to get to that change before the legislation was passed. So, this is just updating on the back. You'll see underlined, we're going to be increasing in the tax year, starting April 1, 2023, increasing up to $162,000, which is the COLA increase for Social Security beneficiaries, which is around 8.7%. Also, the changes were under Section 2, underlined as well.
For their income.
Regarding their income that they make per year.
Okay. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things that I want to comment on. I received a call from Ms. Zins from Assessing today, who had been listening to the conversation at that committee hearing. And she was concerned that there was maybe some misinformation or misunderstanding. And that's kind of why I looked away, because I wanted to make sure that I got the right RSA. RSA 72-37B governs this particular exemption. And Section, Roman numeral 3A-1 speaks to life insurance paid. And we'd had a conversation about life insurance. And it was, it's not going to, the life insurance is not going to have an effect in it. It would possibly have a negative effect, reducing assets. And she wanted it to be clear that any life insurance that is paid during, before April 1 will, in fact, count towards their income. So, that would be part of, part of an income. Having a life insurance policy that may have a value will not count towards the, towards that. So, I just want to make sure that we clarified that particular statement in, and I think it was that we were all talking and kind of talking in different tones. So, she wanted to make sure that we did clarify that. And I hope that I have gotten it right. But it is the RSA 72-37B, Roman numeral 3A-1, that speaks to life insurance paid. And to add to what Alderman, sorry, oh, my God. It's been awful. I have that horrible 62-year-old brain now. And to speak to him, I, I am proposing the 8% in the, for the elderly. And the reason we came up with the 8% was because that is the Social Security cost of living raise. And I was concerned that we would have some people that, when this would go through, some homeowners, that would, because of that 8% raise, would suddenly now not qualify for it. And I did not want to see that happen. So, we increased that, and at the same time, we decided that the 8%, seeing that, and I spoke to Mr. Griffin on this subject, and he felt that the 8% was a good federal number that we could hang our hat on. It wasn't just something we were pulling out of the air. So, it has some substances to it. And, and that's why we went with it. There was also conversation at that meeting relative, why do we do the merry the same as the, the single rate? And I believe that Attorney Bolton spoke to that. And it was so that if we didn't, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm misquoting you, Attorney Bolton, but that it was if we, we had separate ones, if one of them had passed and the income or something to that level, they may no longer qualify. And it was decided by a previous board that that was what it was. Am I kind of in the ballpark of that, if I may?
Essentially.
So, that's why we kept it. And I have spoke to other communities who have, do have different, it's modestly different. But, so, it was to protect homeowners in case they lost one of their spouses. And that's why we did it in this particular manner. So, thank you, Madam President.
You've heard the motion. The motion is to amend. It's O.
Sorry, I had Alderman Moran, I'm sorry, and then Alderman Sullivan.
I apologize, Madam President. I read the script verbatim, and I realized it was not the Joint Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee. So, I'd like to amend my motion to reflect it was the Administrative and Personnel Committee. What's the right name? I'm sorry.
Personnel Administrative.
Just like, I want to flip it around. Just to reflect the correct name.
Okay, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the author of the legislation, if we pass this, how many people qualified for it last time? How many people will qualify for it this time? And what will the impact be on revenue paid into the city? Do we know that?
I would like to defer to Alderman Klee on this, I think.
I would like to defer to Alderman Cle on this, uh, I think it's thirty-four, thirty-eight, a very small number, but she has the exact number.
Um, I, it's not so much that I have the exact number, um, but I did speak to, um, Ms. Zins about this when I was talking to her about the elderly. And it's very difficult for them to quantify because they don't, they don't take down the person's exact income. So they don't know whether or not they're getting social security, whether the eight percent would do it, um, by raising this. Are there other people that will not qualify that didn't qualify before? So they could, she could not quantify it for me. So I apologize. I don't have those exact numbers for you, but I do think at one point we were provided with the numbers and it was very small. It was, as, as Alderman Moran mentioned, it's a very small amount. This is for, just for the, the disability. It's a much larger number when we come into the elderly.
Sure, yeah.
But again, the, the answer will be the same for that one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome. Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Moran.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would like to make a motion for final passage, uh, passage of zero twenty-two dash zero thirty-six as amended. And briefly speak to it one more.
Alderman Moran.
Uh, so the, uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, the changes would be in section one A. And again, we're just going to be mimicking, uh, what we did with, uh, the elderly tax exemption and, uh, increasing, um, the exemption, uh, starting in tax year April first, two thousand twenty-three.
Alderman, come on.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I do support this ordinance. I just wanted to make a quick statement for anyone that happens to be watching or listening, because I got a couple of phone calls after we, uh, increased the exemption amounts for the elderly. This will not affect the December tax bills that people had just received, because I did get a couple of questions like, why, you know, why didn't my, my bill go down? This is for, for next year, just so that anyone listening understands that this will take effect next year.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-two thirty-six is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O dash twenty-two dash zero three-seven, authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Charles Street and Terrace Street.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make, to amend O twenty-two oh thirty-seven by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of the recommended amendments made by the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, in keeping with a former Alderman Chassé, when every time we have a Goldenrod copy, it should be explained, you know, what is changing to the original motion. Uh, in this case, uh, when we put the legislation together, it wasn't written to indicate that there were two stop signs and, and therefore we had to do the amendment to cover both stop signs. And, uh, again, that is a, a plan that was put together around the Franklin Street School by the city engineer and the traffic manager and, and, um, and all the signs are in place.
Motion is to amend, Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam President. And for those that are listening in that area, um, this is more or less a housekeeping because we had to do this for safety reasons. Where this intersection is, is right where Charles Street becomes a one-way, the opposite direction. And you really need that pause of all the stop signs, um, whether you're going left or right, um, onto that. We were finding that a lot of people were just not even stopping. They were just kind of going through, so. And then there's the other issue that happens much to what the stop sign that we discussed earlier, um, in that nobody knows who has the stop sign. So they all kind of, either all go or stop and someone's honking. So it makes it easier. We did similar things like this on a lock in orange. It's just easier to put the stop signs there and I, I, I am grateful for the extra work that was done. So thank you, Alderman Dow.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-two oh thirty-seven as amended.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-two thirty-seven is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-two dash zero seven-six, approving the use of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program Funds by neighborhood, neighborworks of Southern New Hampshire for the apartments at two forty-nine Main Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman, Alderwoman Hemmings and myself. Given it's first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-two dash zero seven-seven regarding the care and control of Nine Riverside Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien.
I'm already on it.
Did you have your hand up or not?
No, I have already on it, thanks.
Oh, okay, right, okay. Alderman Camo, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow and myself. Given it's first reading, I will sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-two dash zero three-eight, establishing fees for parking spaces utilized for extended outdoor dining.
Additional sponsors? You sure? Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen. Given it's first reading, I will sign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-two dash zero three-nine, amending the tax exemption for elderly persons by increasing the maximum allowed individual and combined net income and asset amounts.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, Alderman Karen, myself. Given it's first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel and Ministry of Affairs Committee. Period for public comment? No one has signed up. Remax by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight.
Madam President, not too sure that tonight is the last night before the Christmas holiday. You're shaking your head that it is, so I would like to wish, uh, everyone of the city a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I, uh, just quick tonight, I had sent, um, some emails. Uh, I won't name any names, uh, that's not appropriate. So I had put out some, uh, questions about, there was an email that came in about the Ethics Committee. I wrote in and I said I would be offered help to staff it if that's where we wanted to go. I also sent out an email offering, uh, in addition to legislation that we discuss at committees, perhaps we would want to discuss, uh, hiring, pace of hiring in the city. I know we have a lot of open heads. It would be good to get that update before the Board of Aldermen, as well as, uh, the fiscal statements that we receive and a quarterly look back, perhaps in the Budget Committee to see where we are in terms of revenue, uh, and expenditures. I didn't hear anything back from anybody. I would appreciate a response, uh, either good idea or you're crazy. Uh, it doesn't really matter. Uh, I can take it either way. Uh, I would just appreciate a response, uh, just so we can get things moving. That's it. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you so much. Um, I want to start by thanking the, um, the Electric Aggregation Committee. Um, I, I've only gone to two of the meetings, one of them being the public hearing. And I, I find that each, um, person there is very thoughtful. And there's definitely an admiration, um, society going on for Doria Brown, our energy manager. They look to her, she's very hardworking and, um, you know, my, my compliments to where they've gone so far. I also want to thank, um, Director Cummings, Director, um, Sullivan and Pamela Davis for coming out and speaking to my ward for two hours on Thursday night. It went by very quickly. The, uh, people there were very engaging. The, um, uh, the Directors Cummings and Sullivan, as well as, uh, Ms. Davies, um, spoke to them about projects in the city, where things were going. There were other questions that were asked that were outside, but they still took on those questions and I truly appreciated everything that they did. It was so successful that some people that weren't there have asked when they're coming back. I have, um, they've all been willing to come back and I'm thinking maybe in March, when the snow isn't kind of too much on the ground there. But I do really appreciate it and I will be having more of these meetings with more city, um, folks. And I recommend it to all of, all of the Aldermen here. It went really well. And everybody asked some great questions. And, um, just to, as a tease to, um, my colleague two doors over, um, in the State House, if your phone rings, you have to make a twenty-five dollar donation to
That was just once. That was just once. If you were there, you would.
But no, we, it, we, it did happen before, but I will tell you that when they announce it, people will set off their phones in generals just so that they can make that five or twenty-five dollar donation. So I'm only teasing. And, um, I want to wish everybody happy holidays. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to express my thanks to everyone, uh, all the members of the board, uh, and members of the City Hall staff who reached out to me after, uh, my father-in-law passed away. That's my absence from the board for the last several weeks and I would like to thank, um, my, uh, Vice Chair or PDC, Alderman O'Brien, for taking over for that, uh, committee while I was out. I appreciate it very much. And, um, you know, just my Bill, uh, was a, a longtime resident in Nashua. He, um, retired from Riviera University after twenty-plus years of working there. He had about, um, maybe a little bit over a year, uh, of retirement, uh, before he became ill. I think I talked about it at a previous, uh, board, uh, meeting, but I can tell you he, up to his very last moment, he was full of life. He was a very joyful person, would give you the shirt off his back. My children just adored him as their grandfather. And I, you know, you always wonder, um, as a dad, when you have, especially when you have a daughter, I guess, uh, what daughters can do no wrong, uh, in their father's eyes. And I could see that every day with Bill and my wife Lisa. She was certainly the apple of his eye. And, um, I appreciate everyone who's reached out. I may not have responded to you, but I probably have responded to ninety-nine percent of people who reached out. But, uh, thank you so much, uh, for the well wishes, the flowers, the cards. It was, um, welcoming in a time of, uh, sorrow. With that, and on a positive note, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone who celebrates it. Happy Hanukkah. I think we're in Hanukkah right now. And, uh, general happy holidays, I guess, to everyone. And I hope everyone catches up on their favorite Christmas movies. You can't go wrong with Die Hard or Grand.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, regarding Christmas movies, the one that I was, uh, trying to remember was, uh, earlier with the Aggregation Committee was It's a Wonderful Life. I was asking what happens if everybody pulls out their account? So please, if we do this, don't, don't everybody pull out once. On a more serious note, um, there was a news article that went out last week regarding Caribbean Breeze. Uh, it's a diner right on the other side of the building here, um, on the corner of Main Street and, um, West Hollis. The owner, um, Gerald, uh, took over, he's known as Chef O, um, took over from Norton's and, um, he's a great guy and he's been a wonderful part of the business, of the downtown Main Street community. He went out of his way to keep the diner open as a diner, even though he bought it as a Caribbean restaurant and was thinking this would be like an evening kind of spot. He gets up every morning at six AM to make, or earlier even, to make sure that he's continuing the, the egg breakfast and everything that people have been used to for years, only because he didn't want to disappoint people coming there every year. And his prices are great. You can get ninety-nine cent coffee over there. You can get a whole breakfast for four ninety-five. He's trying to be affordable. He's trying to be accessible to the community and the article was troubling for many, but not surprising to all. He's been targeted multiple times with attacks that are racially motivated, having the N-word drawn on his, uh, front window, having people tell him off based on the color of his skin and that kind of stuff, when they're trying to use his parking lot for whatever they were trying to do. It's a very unfortunate situation. And in the article, he expressed some concerns about the speed in which, uh, Nashua PD has been responding, the investigating detectives. We all know that Nashua PD is dealing with staffing shortages and a pretty epic number of, uh, major and violent crimes. And I am confident that this is not any kind of a deliberate oversight or anything like that. Um, I did reach out to the Chief of Police and immediately got a response that they agreed that we could have a neighborhood watch there. I'm waiting for Barbara Costa to reach out, uh, to organize it, but, um, I want to assure the members of the community that are concerned that Nashua Police is not going to discriminate in terms of solving crimes or investigating things. And they are committed to making sure that each member of the community feels safe. Actions before words, so they're gonna, they're gonna step up and try to get, uh, to the bottom of all the things that have been happening. And that's, that's nothing less than I would expect of them at all times. And we will be addressing some additional, um, safety issues that are going on in the Main Street area too. So the idea of turning this into a, um, a town, not a town hall, um, a neighborhood watch for the downtown area is, is so far being very well received. On another note, the sun is very low in the sky this time of year. And so it's important to remind pedestrians and drivers alike that there, when the sun in your face, you can't assume that the cars will necessarily be able to see where you are when you're stepping out. And likewise, drivers, sometimes pedestrians may be stepping out or getting out of their cars or any other number of things. So it's a good idea for everyone to be much more careful than they normally are. I have seen, uh, an absurd number of people running across the street, you know, not near intersections or, or that type of thing, um, just assuming that cars will be able to see them and I don't think they're always able to. So I just wanted to pass that as a safety, um, reminder. In the, on the topic of it being, um, a particular time of year, um, next Wednesday is the longest night of the year. So it is, uh, a longstanding tradition to observe a vigil for the people who have been homeless and who have spent the longest nights outside and unsheltered. So I'm inviting everybody on the board to join me at City Hall Plaza at six PM next Wednesday. Stand in solidarity for people who have passed. Renew your commitment to make sure that remembering all of our residents and that our budgetary, uh, priorities reflect the needs of the community. And be there to comfort people and, and help them be, feel heard, who have lost people and who are suffering. With all of that being said, uh, we are doing a lot for the, the community, the homeless community. Things this year may be turning better than they ever have been. There's the new, um, women's, uh, mission that's been opened. The Soup Kitchen just did the ribbon cutting on their Spring Street Shelter, which is going to expand, um, shelter capacity for homeless families, which is sorely needed. Stepping Stones, uh, managed to push through with their, uh, zoning board variance to expand, um, emergency shelter offerings for young homeless people, all of which is very, very much needed and very much encouraging. So it's not all terrible news, but there's so much more work to be done. We all need to pull together. With regards to the homeless veterans, Operation Enduring Welcome is still collecting Christmas decorations. The basket outside the mayor's office is looking a little empty. Uh, so if you want to drop a couple Christmas ornaments or garlands in there, um, everything dropped in there is being brought to the, the veterans staying, um, at the Lanus House so they can decorate their halls and make it a little more festive. And so they can celebrate the holidays too. So with that all being said, I want to wish everybody a happy holidays. And Alderman Cle would like me to ask everyone, anyone who wants to donate gift cards to do that, but if you look at the basket, you look at the decorations, there's plenty of information there. So have a happy holidays, everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the fact that we've, we've lost two, um, two great people, uh, former Alderman Cleaver, um, Skip Cleaver, who, uh, died recently. And, um, also Commissioner Tracy Pappas. They were both, uh, very dedicated and, uh, spent a lot of time in service to the city and, uh, and they will be missed. And, uh, on a more positive note, uh, happy holidays to everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I will be brief. I just wanted to wish everybody, uh, a very happy holiday season and, uh, and a happy new year. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I wanted to remark on the opening of the new shelter, um, that the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter has been working on. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting. It is an amazing feat. If you have the opportunity, if you'd like a tour, let me know. But we've just done a ton of work and, and, and a place in our city that really, um, is um, is needed. So, uh, we've added beds for both, um, women and men and also the transitional housing for, for families. You walk in these rooms and it allows us to put, uh, families together with sliding doors. Um, and there's also housing on the top floor, um, that our studios and I think there's one one-bedroom. So it was really great. There was a huge crowd out, even though it was freezing and windy, um, to see and they really were, um, they honored the history of the building, um, in, in doing this work. So it, it really is a fantastic feat and shout out to all of the organizations who are working especially hard during the holidays to make sure that the community needs are met, um, including the Soup Kitchen, the Children's Home. Um, we just have an incredible network of, of nonprofits, um, making sure that the holidays are merry. And just a, just a reminder that the holidays are when we think about it, but people need help all year round. So, um, I also wanted to say happy holidays, everyone.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, some people may have heard already, but, uh, back on Thanksgiving, Bill Munson, who, uh, coached the lacrosse team and was assistant football coach at Nashua South, had a, a heart attack and had been in the hospital ever since. Um, and I found out today that he sadly passed away. Um, so I'd like to offer my condolences to his wife, Taylor. Uh, he leaves behind an 18-month-old son, uh, named Finn. It's just a absolute tragedy. It's going to be felt throughout not only the entire South community, but the school district as a, as a whole and the city as well. Uh, it's going to be a, just a tremendous loss. Um, and, uh, trying to end on a happy note, uh, happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I could not agree with Alderman Moran Moore, Die Hard, Greatest Christmas Movie Ever Made.
Alderman Dow.
Just real briefly, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Um, everybody enjoy the, the holidays with family and friends and, and please keep safe. The other thing I want to mention is today I happened to be at the, um, School District Maintenance Office at what I thought was a very unfortunate time because when I left it was when the kids were getting out of school. And as you know, there are several hundreds of cars the students drive. And I was absolutely amazed at how the students would let other students out of a parking space to get in line without any hesitation or fight. And it wasn't just one, it was several. And I was just impressed at how well they drive and how polite they are. Uh, a lot of times we don't see that or we don't acknowledge that in our high school students and, and this is Nashville High South, so my praise goes out to all of the kids that have cars there.
Alderman Gavere.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody. Hope you have a healthy and safe new year as well.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Um, I too want to send my condolences out to, uh, these three important people who passed recently. Uh, Alderman Cleaver, um, he was a wonderful person. He worked hard up in the State House as well as on the board. Um, Tracy Pappas, um, on the Board of Public Works. I worked with her, uh, trying to resolve issues that we had at Gurley Park over the years, but, uh, she was always willing to listen and that was a good thing. And finally, um, to the Silver family, Dottie Silver, uh, passed away, um, in the last few weeks. She was very involved with the arts and especially this symposium. She used to have people to her home and stay there and she was very active along with her husband Alan Silver when he was on the Park Rec Commission and on the Aldermanic Board. So, um, it's very difficult for people, when people pass away, but especially during holiday time. So my thoughts and prayers go out to the, the family. I too want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and hopefully you all have fun. Uh, Die Hard is not my Christmas movie. But that's okay too. So I'm wishing you all a happy, healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
I thank you, Madam President. I have a few things. First off, um, you know, a half hour before I got here, I heard the same news that Alderman Camo had heard about, uh, Mr. Munson. Um, my son and his girlfriend both had him as a teacher in South and, uh, you know, they had nothing but great things to say about how he was as a teacher. I never got to meet him or his, uh, wife, who's also a teacher in the city. Um, you know, we know how important teachers are and to, this is just a tragedy for everybody. Um, and it, it was really sad to hear, um, that that happened today and, uh, you know, uh, it was just a tough, it's always tough to lose somebody and especially tough during the holidays. And, you know, kind of going off that a little bit, um, you know, a lot of people are happy during the holidays, but there's an awful lot of people that struggle going through the holiday season and, and just know that, you know, everyone you talk to, there might be somebody that, that's struggling with whatever's going on and it could be a loss of someone, it could be their situation. Um, not all the holidays are, are good for all people. Um, and I think, uh, that's something that I try to think about because it's trying to put my, you know, empathy, putting, putting myself in other people's shoes and I, I think it's something that, that we need to, um, not us, but just people in general need to, uh, keep in the back of their mind. The Caribbean Breeze stuff, that's just, I read the article, it's, it's horrible. Um, you know, that should not be happening in, in the city and everyone that, that cares about getting rid of racism should be standing up for it. It's, it's just awful. Um, and it shouldn't, we should have more diverse ownership on Main Street, not driving people out. And again, I say we, I don't mean us. The Ethics Committee, if, if there's one to have and then we should be having it, then we should have it. It should be, if it's in our charter, if it's in the rules, then we should have that committee. I'd, I'd be happy to serve on it as well. But I think if, if it's something that we should, we're supposed to have, then we should probably have it. I want to thank, uh, Director Cummings, uh, and Rich Lannan for coming here today to, to give us an update on the PAC or Nashville Performing Center, Performing Arts Center. Um, I think, you know, that's had something that's taken a long time to come to fruition and it was a lot of negativity around and there was a lot of fight over it. And I think what they've done and what they've been able to withstand during pandemics and, um, at this point where it's about to open in a couple of months is, you know, something, uh, you know, I don't want to say Herculean, but pretty much is. And I really appreciate the work they've done. Rich Lannan, he's gone through a lot, um, you know, and I, I appreciate what he's done and I appreciate what he's doing on the Downtown Improvement Committee as well. Um, he's really something, somebody that's put a lot into Nashville and the city and I think we're going to really see the, the fruits of that labor come out here in a couple of months and, uh, I'm going to send my list of acts to, to Tim when I get home. And just lastly, I want to thank Doria Brown, uh, for coming here tonight and, uh, again, I always wish more public would come out because this, this aggregate stuff is, is confusing. It's not easy to grasp. Um, I work in the industry and I still were confused by some of it. So I think it's important to hear it. It's important to ask the questions, um, because we're going to get the questions because not a lot of people came. So people are going to ask us about it. Um, so it's good for us to understand it. So I thank her for coming. She's great. Um, and lastly, you know, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Hanukkah. I think Hanukkah starts on the 18th and then obviously Christmas after that, um, and all the, any of the other holidays people celebrate. Um, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all you guys. Um, it's been a great year and I look forward to continuing with it.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first I want to, um, respond to, uh, my colleague, John Sullivan. Um, one, I can't get into my email. I can get into my email, I can't respond. And I've been having issues with that and people on the board know, but I would love to respond to you, I just couldn't. Everything get kicked back to me, undeliverable, okay? That's number one. So sure, I would love to be on that committee. Secondly, I'd like to echo with my colleague over in Wall 4 with, um, the Caribbean Breeze. I did see that really nasty email, I mean, picture that he showed me from, um, from his, um, phone and, um, it's hurtful to put those words on your window. I mean, it's, I mean, you don't want to be calling names, you just don't. And even though, um, he's kind of not African-American, he's another black person and it, it has a different tone with him than it did with me, by the way. So I'm just letting you guys know that when you think that you're really hurting a person, you may not be really hurting them. Because he didn't grow up with that word. I did though. So I took it more offensively than he did. He was like, uh, you know, this is what was here. But maybe you guys see him the same as you see me, we're both black. But just so you know, it's a, it's not a good word, it's a very hateful word. On a happier note, um, the Alton Street Community Center is having their winter celebration on Saturday. It's down at 2 o'clock and I would love for all you guys to go. I mean, bring your kids, have fun, they're having a whole bunch of activities. It's going to be a good event, a really good. And the more people go there to support the Alton Street Community Center, the better off everybody in the city would know because you would meet your, um, colleagues all over the city. Also, I'd like to wish, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and Kwanzaa. That's the day after Christmas. We do celebrate that. And that's, that is solely an African-American, um, holiday and every 26th of December, we celebrate Kwanzaa. So happy Kwanzaa as well. That's all I have to say and thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Bolton.
There have been a couple references to the Ethics Review Committee. That's governed by Section 12-30 and, uh, the next section or two of the national ordinances. Members of the Board of Aldermen, being municipal employees, are not eligible to serve on that committee. I happen to the, no, I happen to be aware that the mayor is, uh, looking for suitable candidates to appoint to that committee and so you may be seeing some of that in the near future.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to, um, thank Doria Brown for all the work she's put into the Aggregation Committee. She is, she's wonderful to work with. I'm very excited about the Nashville Center for the Arts. I can't wait for that to open. I don't care what I see, I just have to go see something. Um, very excited about it. And also I would like to wish my granddaughter a happy 18th birthday today and, uh, wish everyone a happy holiday.
It's my mother's birthday as well.
Oh, and my niece is 17 today.
Okay, committee announcements. Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow was the Health Committee meeting at 12:30 here at, um, City Hall, third floor.
Okay. Alderman Dow.
Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee, 7 o'clock, Nashville High School. So, north. I'm sorry.
North.
Any of that minute I said it.
Any other committee announcements? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the, uh, December 13th meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:53 p.m. Thank you.